We're now live on Channel Eight in YouTube.
Yes, welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals tonight. Today's August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's six thirty, huh?
August thirtieth.
August third, I'm sorry. August thirtieth. I'm looking at an old. I'd like to open the meeting tonight.
Start with the pledge?
Yes. Would everybody please stand and do this with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge my donations to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for its stand, one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. We got a lot on the candidates tonight. We're gonna start tonight with. CCMPZ School Street LLC, because we've been doing their case, the three or four meetings now. And I am to understand that the both lawyers, Tom Counsel and the lawyer at the MPZ School LLC. You came to an agreement on the wording that was left.
That is correct.
I believe we did, yeah. I'll let Matt and Jordan speak for themselves, but I believe we did.
Alrighty, that's good.
We did, yes. Thank you, Tom. And so we're looking forward to going through the very end of this tonight.
Hope so.
Yeah.
We appreciate everybody's time. We think we have a very, a good decision now that we've worked on.
You guys did a great job putting everything together. So both sides are very, very happy with the wording and everything that was.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can give you just a little. So we were fine. It came down to one point, which was, you know, typically in the decisions I draft, I like the regulatory agreement, which is the agreement that the party signed with the state to be on record before we issue building permits. This is, this is a different project. Honestly, I had a nice conversation with Matt this afternoon. This is a different project than, than is the typical forty B. And so Matt was able to explain to me why it was important to them that they have the ability to pull a building permit before the regulatory agreement is, is recorded. And it said, Matt doesn't even know this, but I, so I did contact the HCD and I finally heard back from Rebecca about fifteen minutes ago, maybe twenty minutes ago, where she acknowledged that, you know, my concern was that I, I didn't like issuing a building permit till everything was on record. She confirmed for me that this is the way they do it, and that issuing the building permit is part of what they need to do to close the loan. And the regulatory will, agreement will go on record right after the loan is closed. So we're fine. Lori and I were able to talk to the building inspector about it. He's fine. So, yeah, I think, I think we've got a good decision. I'm certainly happy with it. And I think Matt is too, so, you know, we're good to go from our, from our end.
All right, that sounds good. Does the board have any questions on? Anything?
I have one question about the dog.
Ask them.
We were talking about, we're talking about the dog place for the dogs.
We have it, we have it in the decision, we, an area that's fenced for dogs to take care of their business. So it explicitly says that in the decision. We can read it to you if you'd like, but it's there.
All right. Any other questions? Other than that, we've already voted on it. And all we have to do is sign it. And Laurie, I believe you have the paperwork, if you would.
If you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready. So if you pass that down, Alan, you start up there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, while you're signing, I just wanna, I wanna thank you for your time and efforts on this. It was extremely easy to work with you all, and we appreciate that. We're very excited to move this project forward. I do want to explicitly and expressly thank Town Council. Tom is, is great to work with. It's been a real pleasure. And I, I think he added value when we started working on the decision together. So I appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank Lori for all of her hard work. She was really instrumental in moving this all forward. So I just wanted to say that and go on record.
Well, I appreciate that, Matt. And I would, I would say that the applicant's group was also easy to work with. And whatever value I add, I steal from Lori and make it my own.
Well, everything went great. I, I, everything was organized perfect. It's our said, done deal now. Thank you very much. And thank you for your cooperation. We appreciate it.
We look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great evening.
Guys, have a great night.
You too.
That's done. We'll be moving on to the next case, Lori.
Yes, did you? Did you want to, I know you and I discussed an order. Did you want to go right to fourteen Main Street?
Uh, yeah, Beaumontville. I mean, Otter River.
Otter River, wow. Yeah, fourteen. No, 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 we're talking Iona Phil, that was the other one. Maurice and Iona, yes, Richards?
Yes.
Okay.
So we will open up the meeting for the here, the case between, or for Maurice and Iona Richards of fourteen Main Street. You wanna put a two bedroom, two bedrooms on the house addition? Is that what's happening?
I don't know, can you be there?
You can, you can come up here if you'd like.
And you need to make a motion to open the hearing.
Right. I will make, I will make a motion, like I say, sorry about that. I'm kinda filling in that somebody was dying. I apologize. So bear with me a little bit. I make a motion to open the case for Maurice and Iona Richards, fourteen Main Street, to consider a variance for, I believe it's a two bedroom, add on to a house.
Yes, thank you.
Will I have a second?
Make a motion, make a motion, open up with Mary.
Hearing. All right, second?
My second.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Could you tell us what you'd like?
Sure. Um, we're looking to add two bedrooms on. And I think I might have put some of the medical history in the paperwork. I'm not sure.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into that too deep, but our youngest was born twenty-eight years ago with cerebral palsy. And she has a lot of medical implications. She's in a category of citizens with her insurance that are deemed ICU care. So she's quite in, it's intent, it's quite intense keeping up with her. We have a financial hardship and we have a hardship just trying to give her her care. I've done it for twenty-eight years. I've been the sole night person along with the day, but I've never had night help. And I'm getting older and it's getting harder to keep up with her. My daughter expressed an interest in doing nights. She has two young kids and you can't take on that kind of a job with two kids without moving in. So we thought she could move in, give it a year trial. And if she wanted to do that, she could have the house with Chelsea because it's all handicap accessible. And we would hopefully be able to get an addition and live over on, on that side. There's kinda like two sections to the house. My father-in-law was dying about twenty years ago, so we added on a couple of rooms for him. So that would be our living space because she, she doesn't want her mom and dad living with her, which I can understand. But anyways, it would take the both of us to keep up with her. And we were kind of in a hardship before COVID because I was just struggling to keep up with her care. And then when COVID hit, we lost more help than we had. So it made it more of a struggle. So anyways, that's what we're looking for to add two bedrooms on so we can all live together and take care of her because she requires twenty-four seven care. She's in a wheelchair. She has equipment, you know, she's, she's complicated. And it's taken a toll on my health. It's taken a toll on my husband's doing it all these years. And that's what we're hoping to do so we can have our own space so we can, you know, have separate spaces and each take care of her. Because the whole, the whole place is handicap accessible. So when it's my time to take care of her, I could do it on what we want to be our side. And she would be on, on that side. So that's what we hope we can do. And I have a couple more letters. One is our butter next door who would be affected most by it. And she has no problem with it. And yeah, I've talked to all my neighbors and, you know, they're in support of us and we're hoping, we're hoping that you guys could be in support of.
So you're looking for ten foot variance, which would be from fifteen feet to five feet.
Right.
And you also thought that, I think it just kinda slipped by the boards, but you also need a front.
Well, that's what they told me.
Which is no big deal.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I didn't realize that, right.
Just saying, whatever the decision is, write it in as you're gonna need a front.
Thank you. Yeah, Lori had told me that. I wasn't all familiar with what went on last time. I, I didn't realize that. That was.
Because I, I know for you to move would be, you'd have to start from square one, everything handicapped.
I can't even tell you.
I can imagine. I understand what you're saying. The board members have questions?
Doesn't look like you're any closer to the road than you already are.
No, no, it's not gonna be close. It's that, that's no big deal. We could open it up to the audience if anybody would like to speak on this.
I'm gonna say there's nobody.
I guess not.
I can tell you that all the butters were notified, the notifications came out of this office. I have all the receipts, which properly advertised in the garden news. Twice, so.
Is this the same house the highway went through to clean trees up a couple times?
Probably.
Yeah, I'm right across from the park, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. It's an old house.
Yeah, I'm just. I was one of them that came clean it up a couple times.
Oh, well, thank you.
If nobody's got anything else to say, I make a motion that we take a vote. We'll have exactly a second.
I have the two other letters too. I don't know if you wanna see those.
Alan?
Yes.
David?
Yes, I vote yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
So, but as said, well, hang on a second now. I gotta give it over to Laurie now and she'll.
So what will happen is the members will sign a decision sheet. I'll type up what transpired. And you have a twenty day waiting period to make sure that nobody appeals to the decision. So once that happens, I'll call you, give you all the paperwork and then you can apply for your building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right, so now we can close the hearing on this one. I make a motion that we close the hearing on this case.
Well, second that motion, all in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to the next case.
So the next one is Cory and Heather Fisher of sixty-six Baptist Common Road. They are looking for a variance to reduce the frontage from one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred and forty-five point nine eight. This is in order to create a second buildable lot. And I can see the fishers in here.
You wanna step up and speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
So basically the reasoning behind kind of subdivide this lot into two is to build a retirement home for my parents. They're in their mid-sixties now. Their house, current houses in Phillips, they're like forty plus years old. Just given the state of COVID, state of the economy, the cost of building right now, I'd really like to be able to help them out and get them into something a lot smaller that's easier to maintain and that's brand new as opposed to forty years old so that they don't have to worry about repairs and maintenance and all the things that are likely to come soon with a house of that age. Tried to position the house so that it's kinda set back off the road a lot, keeping good buffers on, on both sides of the proposed house, which I think you guys have plans for there. Basically, the, basically there is a.
How far off the road?
Quite a ways.
Hundred and sixteen feet and eighty feet.
Yeah, that's my house. The proposed would be like eighty feet off the, off the road.
Yep.
And it's a, you know, the, the lot acreage is, is a little over two acres. So it's a little bit bigger than what the, what the town requires. Yep. And then, you know, where the house is, the law actually at that point is like a hundred and sixty-five feet wide. And so it's, you know, as the law goes back, it kinda gets wider as you, as you go back.
All right. Or if any question?
Nope.
You self-explanatory. Sure is. We'll open it up to the public hearing. This, they take your name, please.
I live to the right of.
You do. Nice to meet you.
So my concern is, that's all wetlands in the way. And there's, there's a covert, I don't know if you've walked through this, and it's breaking on the floor.
Yep.
Majority of it's, so do you have plans to divert the waters? When I'm already getting water from the other houses over there.
Across the street?
Yeah.
So I can actually show you, I have. Where is it? So this is the current lot basically here. So this is the covert.
Yep.
So the new property line is actually going to be you know, fourteen, fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Whatever I gotta do to make it, make it work, buildable lives. Obviously, we'll do whatever it takes to make. Because this is very close to mine.
Yeah.
Lot as it is, but yeah, I understand.
Like adequate drainage.
No, it's just.
May I, may I make a comment?
The majority of it is.
Just because zoning, if this is approved, doesn't mean that conservation and building regulations don't have to be followed. Everything has to be followed and taken care of. Just so, just so.
Yeah, we had just, just. So as far as the building, the whole fact that, yeah, that would be.
If you're like. Think it all kinda like.
I'm not, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely make sure it's.
Hasn't rained.
No, but.
Any other comments from anybody? The board have anything? Nothing. I, I think I know we needed, we'd say five feet of.
Forty?
Four, eight. I, I say we write it up for six, just to, just to, you know, give it the extra push. No, no big deal. He's not gonna use it, but to do it. So. Other than that, then, I believe there's no more, um, no more questions. We can take a vote.
Motion.
I make a motion that we vote on the land for the, from a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred and forty-five point nine eight. Do I have a second?
My second.
All right. Alan?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes?
Yes.
Okay. All paid, oh, unanimous.
Same appeal. Twenty days for an appeal process. And once that's done, and actually I didn't tell you, this is Richard. It's, it's, you also have to record it with the registry of deeds. So I'll give you everything that you need when it's ready to go.
Perfect. I know you will. You've been great the whole time, so.
Well, thank you.
With that said, I believe we can close this, this meeting now.
You have one more?
Yes, we do.
You're closing the hearing.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, I'm ready. We closed. Laurie, next one?
The next one is Ronald LeBrave of two eighty State Road. He is being referred, he's here, but he's also being represented by Billson Roy. And they are looking for an appeal. So I'm sorry, the under five point, two point non-conforming uses for requests made. And to consider a special permit for the non-conforming use in an I-1 zone. And a variance request to reduce a side setback from fifteen feet to thirteen point two on one side.
You're already up there. I'm looking, you're already right ahead of me. Why don't you explain what you'd like to do?
Sure, thank you very much, members of the board. My name is Greg Roy with Billson Roy. I appreciate your time this evening. I am representing Ron LeBrave, who's in the back.
You don't wanna come up front?
I don't blame you. TV, make it nervous.
And, and as Lori indicated, we're here tonight for a special permit. The, the property is right on the corner of Crotty Avenue. It's historically been used, there's a, there's a residence there, but it's historically been used as a, currently and historically been used as an auto repair shop. Ron operates Car Works out of that facility, work on Subarus.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, Subaru mechanic. And he's operating, the, the plan is in the last page of your packet. The existing building is right on the corner of Crotty Avenue. It's actually only about, it's less than a foot away from the right of way as it stands today. The front portion of the building closest to State Road is the, is the residence. And then the garage portion where Car Works operates is in the, in the rear portion that has access off of Crotty Avenue. And it, it's quite cramped. I, I'm not even sure that Ron operates with a lift.
Right.
So, you know, Ron is, is looking to, you know, keep the business going and put some money into, into the business to improve the situation, also to be able to provide a higher level of service for his patrons. So he contacted us to build a forty by sixty foot metal building on the property. So the, as was stated, the, the idea here would be to keep the existing structure intact while he's building the building so he can keep his business operational. And then at such time as he's ready to move into the new garage, then he would demo the, the existing building. So we, we placed the, the proposed structure such that he could do that. It's gonna be a little bit of a logistical issue there. We're, we're pretty close, about five feet in, in one spot.
About, you put it behind his garage that he's already used it out.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So really, there's no way to put that size building on the lot without asking for a dimensional variance. So it's a very minor one, but we are asking for approximately two, a little less than two feet of relief. So we're asking to go from fifteen to thirteen point two feet on the, on the back corner. On the, excuse me, on the easterly property line. So that's the variance request this, this evening. The, the special permit is relative to the fact that the, the property is owned resident, is residential. And so the existing use is considered a pre-existing non-conforming use in your bylaw. I think it's section five point, I can't remember the section, but I think Lori read it, requires us to come and, and seek a special permit from your board for that, to continue that, that use and reconstruct the, the building that the use is in. So your, yours is our first stop. We also need to go to Conservation Commission. There's a wetland system in the back of the property. So almost that entire eighty-five feet that we have labeled there is, is a boring vegetated wetland. And then we do also need to make a stop before the planning board for site plan approval, but we didn't wanna be premature and put the cart before the horse there. So we're before you for, just to make sure we're square with zoning. Before we, we made those filings, but we are ready to make those. You know, as soon as we, as soon as and if we, we, we have a decision from your board. So I'm happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Yeah, I got one. Crotty, that's gonna be your main entrance. It's not gonna come in off the, off of sixty-eight.
Correct. They're, they're actually, there is a, there is a driveway. You can kinda see it there where it says existing pavement off of State Road. We're gonna keep that, but we're not going to modify that at all. So the main entrance and the bays will be off of Crotty Avenue. That's correct.
And so you're, you're just looking for three feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Two feet, actually.
Two, two feet, a little less than two feet. We won't object if you wanna make. You know, the concrete, the concrete form guys are, are, you know, appreciate that when they don't have to put it within a tenth.
You know, the other things are not conforming, right? It's already, it's already been a business there.
Yeah, correct.
Board have any questions?
No. Not for, not for more.
Open it up to public, yeah. Anybody, yes, take your name and.
I'm Paula Erickson, and I represent the Stone Man Trust, which is some of the the wetlands that we were just talking about and the wood area behind that. And I'm just, you said that now that will have to be approved, the plan has to be approved by the Conservation Commission as well as this, this board. Okay, so you anticipate any issue about that? How this may affect the wetlands and the area behind it?
Uh, we don't, we're gonna have to complete, this is a commercial, a commercial use. So we're gonna have to satisfy the Wetlands Protection Act's stormwater management standards. There's ten state stormwater management standards that we're gonna have to comply with here. And those are intended to protect wetlands, really. So we can't discharge more water to the wetlands than we do in the pre-existing condition. We have to treat it, you know, so we, we don't put water with silt and sediment into the wetlands and things like that. So that will be in place. That'll be reviewed by both the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Both of those also will be public hearings. So you'll get the same notice.
We'll get more notice.
You will, yeah, you will.
But I have no objection to the idea of the business being there. It's been there ever since I used to walk to the river pool to swim. So, and I also own a Subaru. So.
We didn't hear of that.
I, I have no objection. I, I was also interested to know, when is the, the house being torn down, I assume?
Yes, it would happen after the building is.
Is that, that's obviously the first step.
You know, that's gonna be the last.
The last step.
We're gonna do that, yeah, because he wants to keep it, he wants to keep the business operation.
This is going in the garage. And then.
It just makes.
Member of the house. All the time.
No, no, it'll be like back to back.
Okay.
Once the new building's up, I move in, then a house, garage demo will.
Go to the dumpster camp. Yeah.
So we get the fire department to burn it down.
You didn't hear that either, did you?
No.
Yeah, so. When you're, I guess I don't have a clear view of, I, I think probably any plans that were sent were sent to someone other than me from the trust. So I have never seen the plan. So.
Building would basically be right behind the existing.
If you wanna come up here and take a peek at this.
This is State Road.
Yes.
Sounds like an embers to me.
If it was, the notices went all.
We gotta, gotta see if your name's right on here.
So you're gonna have to.
Two ninety-three State Road, Otter River. Yeah, I got one there too. There's two.
We never got a notice.
They have to be sent.
But you are on here.
Well, we never got a notice. The original plan on this was approved when it said that this would be a residence and there would be no cars parked in the front yard. Yeah, that's your original commitment years ago. So is that ever been observed? Not the we would. Don't have cars parked in the front yard for sale? Don't have cars parked in the front yard for sale?
Yes, I know I have.
See, the permit said there would be no, the original permit. And we attended the original hearing on this, that there would be no vehicles parked in the front yard and there was a restriction on the number of vehicles that you could have.
Correct, that, that I could hold for sale.
Right, and it was supposed to be a residence. Well done. Anybody living there?
Nope.
Those were the original permits.
I have both my receipts for the notices that were sent to you.
Well, I don't know who signed them.
I don't know. No, it, it's, it's just proof of mailing. It's not, it's not a certified mail.
They never came.
After we send them, we can't control what happens whether you get it or not.
Anyway, I'm glad I did for another reason. On this whole thing, this is going to be interesting. I'm going to look into this one. I just want to bring it up that we started building a house over thirty years ago on a lot at a house built in seventeen oh five. We were stopped after we got the foundation in by the planning board for machetes because we didn't have the required frontage. The foundation has been sitting there for almost forty years, town water and town sewer, and we were stopped.
They didn't say you've got to go to the ZBA for.
They said we couldn't until, because I own four lots that we had to give another twenty feet to the foundation, which would have put it to the driveway of the next house. Then we had to go with the frontage for that one, which would have taken up the whole front yard of the third house. And then put the fourth lot, which would have put it in the driveway, which we own to the pump station. We would have had to, now, wouldn't that have made sense? On a three acre castle, we were stopped work. And everything is caving in with town water and town sewer.
Previously a building lot. It's been a building lot. There was a building there.
There was a building there that caught on fire in seventeen oh five. When I was working in Saudi Arabia region for fifteen years, my attorney handled the survey that he redid for everything with Mike Zoff showed frontages, which supposedly were approved. Well, when we got built and they said, no, this was never approved because it was all in your wife's and your father-in-law's name, so you can't build a house there. And the foundation's been sitting there because I couldn't get, now the planning board of appeal is saying, yes, they will help us. Now that we've got thousands of dollars wasted there. But it's a whole idea. I could have built the house for thirty thousand dollars back then. What are you supposed to going to cost me now?
Yeah.
So, but what I'm saying is all of a sudden now there's a commercial building going to go in about which we knew nothing about it. Not that I'm going to object to it, but it just, I wish we had known about it. So the thing with the one that's thrown in behind us.
I'm sure we go out of our way to try to contact the people on the list. I, I.
Well, I can't understand.
The fault, the fault, I'm sure it doesn't land in our department as far as after she puts them in the mailbox.
The mailbox isn't there. The mail comes there. Yeah, I get one hell of a lot of bills. All in my name. This is the first we knew about any of this. So, and well, thank you. I'm going to, I want to see some more of those plans.
Yeah, so the, um, this is really just for the zoning portion of it. Like I said, we'll be, we'll be before the Concom in the plane where those will be actually much more detailed.
That's where, that's where you would be asking them questions. We, we're just here for the building itself.
When I wanted to keep some of my construction business here, I happened to build things all over the world. When I wanted to keep a few things, I was told, no, it is a residential property. You cannot have your construction equipment stored on this lot. On any of the four lots. That was a legal notice given to me. Now all of a sudden there's going to be a commercial building?
Well, he's already theoretically, he's already got a commercial building on there.
That was supposed to then have residents.
But, but somewhere along the line, which, which, which doesn't come to us from us, but you know, someone did something in back in.
That's it. Depends on, you know.
Well.
I, I.
I'm in a butter and I went to the hearing three decades ago when Dana Frenness got permission to do what he did in his mother's garage. And he kept his word to the T and he's been an awesome neighbor for thirty to three, thirty years at least. And I'm here to speak for this project. We've had a business, a town person making a living and providing goods and services that we need, reasonable gas and good, good service and the, I don't believe the town is ever going to complain in thirty years. And his son-in-law is taking over and filling his shoes and doing an awesome job. And I, I think it's, this, this town should encourage them to be able to earn a living on their own property and put back. It's going to help the town with taxes and it's going to be a much prettier for everybody that drives by. He's going to look at a nice new building and, and that old mess is going to be gone.
It's going to make that intersection safer too.
I will, I will miss the tree going through the corner of the house though. I do remember that from years and years ago.
What about the car accident in the front that took out the front of that vehicle?
Yeah.
So I hope you remember that.
It will look a lot better.
Absolutely. And that's half, that's half of our, our.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's not going to be, you know, and I saw with the house. That's, I agree. And, and the garage, if you work in it, so I don't, I don't know how you can walk around that baby, but you obviously doing.
Make it work. Good job. Driving veteran.
Would have any more? I mean, and like I say, some of those complaints you have, you'll be notified, well, hopefully you'll be notified from the other boards, um, when, when he has to go to the planning board and conservation.
Two other legal addresses I have also.
I would like to take those please.
That I have for my business.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. With the post office, box forty-three, Royal Sun Ave. Or forty-four Wallwood Road and number forty-six Wallwood Road, Royal Sun Ave.
What was your name, sir? What was your name?
My name, Elwood Taylor.
Okay.
Everybody knows me as LV.
Gotcha.
Mr. Taylor, is there somebody that lives in the house at two ninety-three State Road?
My son is staying there and, uh, they're in the process of building about a hundred and ten acres in Virginia. My other son is living in the second house.
Two eighty-nine.
Two eighty-nine is my son.
Okay.
The foundation is vacant. The vacant lot is vacant.
Okay. So two ninety-three is not a correct mailing address?
I still get mailed there because I have a business through there only for the office now.
Okay.
So even though we're forwarding everything to Royalston.
All right.
We have everything there.
You might want to check in with the assessor's office just to put a mailing address there. I took the P O box forty-three Royalston. That's where I'll mail your next.
The other stuff is.
Notices. I, I don't, I can't answer that question. I have the receipt from the post office. I will make sure that it goes to P O box forty-three in Royalston for conservation and planning.
So say, uh, we're not going to object, but I just want to find out what it's all about, what's happening.
Yeah, that's fair.
All right. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You know, I'm down.
Martin, I live at two eighty-six State Road. I'm on the border on these, this side with the variance. I don't know objections at all.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for the record.
I, then I, I personally think it's going to make the, the, uh, building's going to make it really look good, especially getting rid of the house and, uh, and the little garage. So um, that being said, does the board have any, any more questions?
No, as far as the ZBA goes, the rest of it's. Has all to say.
Then I would like to make a motion to take a vote. For the building on State Road, two eighty State Road. And we're looking for a three foot variance. So.
I'll make a motion that we. Now we give the three foot, the variance for this property.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Alan?
Oh, yes.
Davis? Although he is.
Yes.
And Laurie?
You need to do a separate with a special permit.
All the, right, we have that.
Right. So you did the offset. Now you have to do separately.
So I got.
You need another motion.
Okay, for the special permit.
Correct.
All righty.
I'll make a motion for the, to get, to allow a special permit for this property.
I'll second it.
We're going to add to that the non-conforming use.
Non-conforming use, thank you.
All righty. And we'll get to that. All righty.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right.
I heard the drill and I, I got it.
I'm pretty sure you're familiar with it anyway.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Well, like I said, it's two more. It's, uh, two more to, you know, hopefully you'll be notified. And we apologize for that. I mean.
I just want to know what's going on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't blame you. Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to give me an email address too, I can actually.
We don't have these there.
Okay.
How would you do that? I got, I need, how the hell would you do that?
We put up a Homeland Security radio tower for the police, state police and all of them. And while we still can't get internet, we were two days away from that with wifi in Royalston until the selectmen decided that the president is going to put internet to every little town for free. Now you should see what it's going to cost us three years later. We were two days away from wifi on my tower.
That's terrible. What I'll do is I'll make a photocopy of the plans that we have and I'll pop them in the mail to you so that you have them and you're ready for the next meeting.
My son will be coming back to Virginia probably next week.
I graduated with him. So if you want me to send him something, I will.
He gets the email there in Otter River.
Okay.
Because he's living there.
Okay.
We can send it to him.
All right, we'll make sure you're taking care of it.
Do you have carrying pigeons around?
We don't get phone connection either.
I don't get phone connection there either. I don't, I don't get phone connection.
To get this free internet on a wireless plan, you have to buy cable.
That's free, yeah. That's only two seventy-five.
They're going to get you fifty feet of cable for free.
Yeah.
And our house is over a thousand feet up in the mountains. Yeah.
Well, at the town law, not by law, but if you have to live, if you're going to build down, you must build one hundred feet back.
No, so everybody's going to pay for fifty feet of cable.
Yeah.
For the free service. He's taking pretty good care of us.
There you go.
I think that's the better way.
Nuts and the bears.
Then I believe we can close this hearing.
We can close this here.
All right, I make a motion to close this hearing.
I'll second it.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
All right.
If you would please review the minutes that we've been stacking up.
Yeah.
That's your next agenda item.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you need to sign twice.
Okay. Okay.
She wants a date on here too?
No, no date. That's from when I take it to the town court.
It wasn't at this particular one, but I still signed a minute. So what I did.
Nope, you don't have to sign anything, but you can abstain from voting on it because you weren't here for it unless you watch the meeting on TV. Okay.
Am I giving you that one?
Oh, okay.
So now it's, I didn't.
So just abstain from voting on that particular set.
Were you going to discuss the house going up on down there by the pump station? I got a notice on that.
No, that's going to that's something totally separate. That's going to end up in court.
I got a notice that on the thirtieth, they were going to discuss that.
The house at the pump station?
Yeah, the one that the guy's building.
The mini tiny house. Yeah, no, that's, that's a totally separate.
Yeah, because we're having a battle. He started clearing my land.
Great.
Putting up picnic tables and everything. He has forbidden us to drive down the road. It's his driveway now. He put gravel banks up there. And he is living there.
Oh, we know.
Yeah.
We know.
Where's this located?
This whole thing.
This is right across the street from this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be another hearing coming up.
That'll actually not be a hearing. That'll go to our attorneys and he.
Yeah.
I tried talking to one.
Yeah.
When he was trying to throw me off of my property.
Yeah, yeah, no, we have to take care of that a totally different way, Mr. Taylor.
Do you know, is that still a down road?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can check into it.
Because one of the bridge washed out in thirty-eight in those houses. Every house from what the one we own downstream washed out in that flood. And now we now own those lots. And, and on those where the old stone foundations were different, but he claims we can't use the road. If that's his driveway, the road was abandoned.
Not so sure. I can check with Louis on tomorrow morning though. The assessor.
I'm going down there. If I have to take the front end over. Definitely. And I might push that building over.
Whoops, I didn't hear that.
We didn't hear nothing.
Things get backed into, you know.
We didn't hear anything. Sorry for the surprise, but. Yeah, a minute.
Thank you though.
I'm forbidden to build.
Yeah.
And he's going to build a commercial one. I still don't understand that.
You maybe want to look at your lot again. Maybe we can look at your lot again.
Well, it's got a foundation, everything on it. It's got town water, town sewer.
You're paying, you're paying on a building law.
Laurie, sorry to interrupt, but the meeting is still going, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I come before you or whoever, I'd like to do something with the foundation because everything's caving in. I have thousands of dollars invested there.
I will be happy to take a look at it, Mr. Taylor, and then I can give you some direction. We'll see.
I want to start by anytime I look at it, it's obvious what it is. There's a bunch of kids living there with my, my son's fiance. So.
Okay.
Picture them up. Let's see, uh, because I'd like to get it cleaned up and build a house on it.
Okay, we'll take a peek at it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
All righty then.
On to minutes.
So we're going to make a motion for the minute.
You do, and if you could please do them separately because not all of you were here on every set.
I know I was in here.
I mean, did you have here three, four?
Five.
Five? When did you sneak in? I didn't even, I didn't even see you sneak in.
I tried.
All righty then. Uh, all right, some of these are from when John was here, so. Just.
So the first one is March twenty-ninth. You should be working for. And three of you were here that can vote on that one.
Yeah, ready? March twenty-ninth, you said?
Yep.
As I said.
Can't go on that one.
Which one?
March twenty-ninth.
Let me get the March.
Yeah, that's on there.
All right.
Take mine.
Okay. Yes, twenty-nine. So this one is four. Meeting began at six thirty. John was the chair. Trying to see what case this was.
That was sort of Brooks Road.
It was just a meeting on Brooks Road with the attorney, with the attorneys.
Yeah, the Brooks Road. Yeah, the Brooks Road. All righty. So we make, uh, again, this is the first time I've done this, so I may make a motion to.
You need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
To approve all the minutes.
Just March twenty-ninth.
Just March twenty-ninth.
Yep, one at a time.
So, the only ones over here was Alan, David, and myself, I believe. All right. So, I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I second it.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes, and I say yes. Right, next one is.
April fifth.
All righty, um.
This one, we're gonna have the table.
Okay.
Because the present members were John, David and Rick. So we need.
Well, that was with, um. I wasn't here at that meeting, so that one gets tabled. All righty. And then the next one is.
July twenty-seventh.
Attending members were Joe, Alan, Ron Davin and Dennis.
All righty.
And this was your first meeting, uh, the hearing for CCMPZ, which you approved tonight.
Right. Okay, then. I have a motion to accept the minutes for the meeting for April fifth. Oh, I have a second, actually.
Yeah.
Then I'll go to Alan again.
Yes.
David? If I say yes, and you are on this one, all righty. That's that one, and the next one is.
August eighth.
That's again was LLC. All right, and that was, I believe Dennis, everybody is here.
Everybody's here.
So, to accept the minutes for August fifth. Eighth, I'm sorry, August eighth, um, the LLC. I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
I second it.
So that, that's for the eighth, cause I'm seeing the sixteenth.
I got the eight there. That was the second meeting we had. Alan?
Guys have been busy.
Yes.
David? Yeah, yeah, that's all right. That one's done, and the last one is.
August sixteen.
Which would be LLC again, and I believe we all, the members were here.
The four of you were.
So I make a motion that we accept the minutes for August sixteen.
I second it.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes. We'll have to take that up at another meeting.
If you don't, we'll take them. Dave is acting. Clark, would you sign and leave those today's date on the bottom of the ballot? Just as an aside, while David is signing, if you have any paperwork that needs to be shredded or recycled, that has to do with meetings, I know that we all have a tendency to collect. If you wanna give it to me, I'll make sure that it gets taken care of.
About paint and.
No extra.
And I believe there's, there's no new business.
That's up to you. Is there any business?
Well, I, I don't believe there is any, so, with that being said, I believe.
Nothing in the pipeline?
Not at the moment.
Believe we can, uh, make a motion to close the meeting.
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
I'll second that, second.
All in favor?